Roll call please, Patty.
Commissioner Shalay?
Here.
Moyer?
Here.
Knack? Carmen?
Here.
McCaffrey?
Here.
Whitehouse?
Sardar?
Here.
Any additions or deletions from the agenda?
No, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. Anyone wish to speak on anything non-agenda related?
Perfect.
I have a motion to approve the November minutes.
I'm. I move to approve the minutes from the November sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Shalay?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McCaffrey?
Yes.
Sardar?
Yes. Uh, one bit of old business before we move on to anything else. Um, we have a continuation from the site plan of eighty-one, twenty-one First Street. I'll give it to Mr. Bird.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, should be a relatively quick agenda item. Um, the applicant for the site plan for the well, uh, Ms. Twella Soles has been in communication with town staff. Um, we've had a couple of meetings with the planning staff and engineering staff to kind of work through some of the, uh, remaining comments on this site plan application. Um, the applicant has expressed the, a desire to continue that conversation to a later date. Um, there's still some coordination that's needed to, to get those new plans submitted and with holiday schedules and the availability and everything else, just kind of came down to, we need some, some breathing room to get those things done. Um, there's also been a few discussions around considerations for a phased development plan, um, under our land use code provisions and finding a path, um, that makes sense in that regard, and that will be some new information that staff hasn't seen yet. The planning commission hasn't seen yet. So there'll be a little bit more review on that. Um, so those are kind of the things we've talked about, is wrapping things up and looking at a phased approach to how we can, uh, move that project forward and help this applicant out. Um, and so the request from the applicant was to, uh, continue consideration of that application to March fourth, twenty twenty-four. Um, kind of get past the holidays, get time to get those, uh, coordination meetings, uh, scheduled and, and get that work product moving, moving, excuse me. Um, so that was the request is March fourth, twenty twenty-four. Um, the applicant had communicated with staff, um, intended to be here. Uh, illness kind of came on last minute and so weren't able to make it. Um, and so I feel pretty confident that the, the request was very clear to just continue this to a later date. March fourth made sense to town staff. It's what the applicant requested, so we support that, uh, continuation to the March fourth, twenty twenty-four regular planning commission meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I don't know that there will be a lot of substantive matters to discuss on that topic today.
I only have one question. Can I make a motion? We don't need discussion, do we?
I don't feel that we do either. No, anybody?
Question. Do you? Do you think that March fourth is a, is a date certain that this is going to actually come before us?
Um, I do. I think that was part of the discussion that town staff had was, you know, encouraging, uh, the applicant to not just look to what's the next available meeting date and move it out a month. Um, or move it out two months if there's going to be new information coming in that needs review. So we did talk about, um, moving it out far enough to allow those conversations to take place and work around the holiday schedules. So, um, I do believe it that March fourth makes sense for the request to continue.
Any other questions? Motion to approve? Motion to deny?
I move to postpone the site plans for eighty-one, twenty-one First Street to regular planning commission meeting of March fourth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Shalay?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McCaffrey?
Yes.
Sardar?
Yes. Okay, moving on to new business. We have the twenty twenty-four meeting schedule for adoption. Mr. Bird?
Also, not a whole lot to present here. Um, just kind of as the staff report indicates, uh, typically what we do is we look at the calendar for the upcoming year and although our statutes are our, excuse, not our statutes, but our municipal code outlines that the planning commission meets the first Monday of every month. We do have a few Monday holidays that make that impossible. In those instances, we typically schedule the same day of the week, so the following Monday. So the schedule we put in your packet, we've just looked through the twenty twenty-four calendar and we've highlighted in that lighter color the dates that we recommended a change due to, uh, conflicts with national holidays or national days off, um, and updated that schedule accordingly. So that's our recommended meeting schedule for twenty twenty-four. This helps applicants plan their applications and submittals and, and we use it to base the public hearing schedules and other requirements that staff has to satisfy. Um, so we're confident that the schedule works on the staffing end and dodges the holidays. And we're happy to, uh, answer any questions or if there's a question around what we've recommended, we can certainly take a look at, looking at alternatives.
Any questions?
Questions here.
No questions? Okay, motion to approve the calendar.
I move to adopt the schedule of planning commission meetings and sub, uh, submission dates for the twenty twenty-four calendar year.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Shalay?
Yes.
Moyer?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McCaffrey?
Yes.
Whitehouse? Or sorry, Sardar?
Yes.
Okay, that's all for the new business. We will move on to communications. Mr. Bird again.
Thank you. I'm on the hot seat. Um, for the communications, one of the things I included on the agenda, um, at the last meeting, we had kind of had a brief communication back and forth around potential work session topics, um, that we might want to start scheduling for, uh, the planning commission and we heard clearly that the planning commission's preference was for five thirty, uh, PM work sessions before the regular meeting for an hour. That seemed to work best for most people. Um, so that's kind of what we'll intend to do and looking ahead at the schedule. Um, this time of year, uh, tends to allow a little bit more flexibility to have work sessions just because of the cyclical nature of construction development and other things. Not always the case, but right now it looks like we might have, um, some agendas that would allow other topics to be discussed. So we, we're looking ahead to work sessions. Um, and we also heard that a couple of different topics were discussed. We've kept a list of all those topics. We can always add to that list. But what staff took away from, from the last meeting was that one of the higher priorities or desires to bring back and discuss were kind of the planning commission one-on-one type of topics. What's the role of the commission, uh, going through maybe a typical development review process? So what, what, when an application comes in, what is staff looking at? When you get, as a planning commissioner, when you get a packet, what's included in that review? Engineering review versus planning review versus planning commissioners review and kind of work through application procedures and what that, uh, typical process looks like. So that when we bring the information back to you, you have a confidence of what has been reviewed, which things you can be looking at, which things you don't look at and staff handles this administrative matter for engineering standards or vice versa. Um, and just kind of go walk through a couple of typical processes, um, so that you have a clear understanding of what we're doing and what your role is. And then there's a broader planning sense around the commission's roles for community planning, long-range planning, uh, comprehensive plan, zoning and what that means, and we can cover those topics as well. Um, so that's, that's a kind of what I would envision as the commission one-on-one type of conversation is kind of start to finish, where do some of these processes start and stop? And what's the planning commission's role in each one of those and as well as the broader, uh, role and responsibility of the commission as a whole town and not just development specific? Does that sound like the right kind of topic? Am I on the right track there? I also wanted to have an opportunity for the commissioners to weigh in. If there's, you know, topics or questions related to that, so that as we're preparing some information to bring back, um, that we can start answering some of those questions as well.
Cool, I'll go. How difficult would it be to do this almost like an organizational chart style? I mean, we kind of have a defined limited or defined number of things that we do. We do site plans, we do, um, plats, we do, you know, preliminary final plating. We do all the different things that we do. So when, when an agenda comes or a packet comes, order of business is site plan review, plat approval. Could you organize it by basically by items that we see? And then do descriptions underneath? What is the role of a planning commissioner within each of these different things? If it's a site plan, what can we do? What can't we do? If it's a plat review, what can we do? What can't we do? Give me something else. What else do we do?
Re-zones.
Zoning. So when, yes, zoning requests come, come in, what can we do? What can't we do? What are, like, what are the details? Kind of? Yes. Yes.
Whether it's a decision or a recommendation.
Does it stop with us? Are we the final say? Does it continue on to the board of trustees as a recommendation? I just, I think that would help, it would help me for sure. I don't know how everybody else feels. Chime in, but then.
They might save a few questions, too.
You see it on an agenda and you know what we're discussing and it would be a quick reference guide to just pop it open and say, this is what the planning commission does on a site plan review. It feels like that's all we've done, so I keep using that as an example, but.
It is the most common type. Um, site plan review is the last step and it's one with most of the development standards. Um, so you know, every single new multifamily, commercial, industrial type of application comes through site plan review. Almost the only development that doesn't go through site plan review is single-family residential. Um, so there, there is a, for municipality like Wellington, there is definitely a kind of a front end or a heavy lift on site plan reviews. Um, and that's a good thing because it means we're doing business in, in town. So those are, those are good applications to have. But I, I think I hear what you're saying in terms of what we can present, um, or how we can structure that, um, kind of for each, uh, application type, um, who does what. Can certainly work on, on putting some information together in that respect. I will be a little bit hesitant to say what the planning commission can or can't do in a specific nature because it's really your job as a, as a commission to, and we'll, we'll talk about this more in a future work session, too, right? I'm not going to cover it all tonight, but, um, some of the roles of a planning commission are to think outside the box and think big picture that it's hard for staff to say you can do this and you can't do that. We can provide the frameworks in which you operate, um, and focus on that aspect for the types of things you could consider on this type of a request and how broad your view is versus how narrow the view is, things of that nature.
Things to consider, I think is important.
Yeah.
Verbiage and all those descriptions.
Yes, like almost every one of them, we have something come up that has nothing to do with the site plan that we have to avoid.
I mean, if that helps staff structure it too, because I mean, that's probably pretty readily available information on your end. It's just, like you said, the matter of, um, structuring it and putting it in may, and hopefully this is something that can get added to our resource guide as well. Just kind of type it up in outline form, then it's right there.
Yeah, absolutely.
I was gonna just suggest to add to the list. Um, I know there's been some question as to what should or should not be included when we do get these site plans as far as the application and what they've submitted. Um, so maybe just a session on that whole process and what we initially ask for and then what that process looks like going forward.
Can you, i- i- if I understood that you're thinking of like
Elevations.
Application materials, what comes in?
Yeah.
Okay. Got it.
Also, can you like, not in the, in the document like what Eric was describing, or I'm sorry, Chairman Sardar was describing, but just maybe in the conversation, give us some examples of instances where, um, we would make conditions for approval. Right? We've only, I mean, aside from the one very drawn out site plan review that we did for months and months, um, we haven't really seen a lot of things that have conditional approvals. So you know what I'm saying? Like, like the burms for.
Have them all the time.
I, I feel like we don't, I will, since I have been here, I feel like I haven't really seen much of anything as far as conditional stuff.
Because of that, yeah, that young man right there.
I know, he's always finding.
Take care of that before it gets here.
My new phrase that makes me sound like I'm really smart is we just find a path to yes. So thank you for that.
Before Cody, almost anything approved here had a conditional on it.
And, and I think that, you know, there was certainly a conscious effort that was made during the land use code updates to put less reliance on conditional approvals. We had a whole zone district named Transitional that required any new use go through a conditional review process. And, you know, I, I don't have hindsight twenty twenty for a community that I didn't live in and understand why it was developed that way. So I try not to find fault in the process. But as we were looking at that as a, as a staff, it doesn't, it didn't provide a lot of context for, well, what are those areas supposed to be? It requires a conditional review, but based on what? There wasn't a clearly defined process and structure for what to consider in those instances or what it was supposed to be or what it was transitioning from or to. It was a little bit too black box type of scenario. And so what we had tried to do in the land use code was reduce the reliance on conditional approvals and try to think through and, you know, if we allow this as a use by right in this zone district, what can we reasonably expect to come out of that conversation that would be a potential mitigation factor? And have we then added use limitations in the land use code that says if you, uh, operate this business in this setting, these are the things you also have to satisfy for screening, buffering, design elements and things like that, and wrote them in as, as use standards. I don't, I've worked in a lot of different communities and not a single one of them has every land use code factor completely dialed into where it's foolproof. We need to go back and review land use code provisions periodically and make adjustments based on things that we see that are changing or that worked well, that didn't work as well as we wanted it to. Let's update that. Um, but a big push has been in planning circles in Wellington here, definitely to move away from the uncertainty of conditional reviews and focus more on, these are the things that you can do. These are the things that you have to do to operate that way. Um, so that's been a big push was to get away from the conditions, but we can definitely, it still does come up from time to time and we can definitely shed some light on what are those situations? Where is it defined in the code where there's some flexibility? And if we grant flexibility, sometimes there's a condition needed to not take it too far, um, and that can be spelled out in an approval. So we'll definitely shed some light on that topic a little further.
Okay, because I mean, like aside from the screening, right, in that one circumstance, I don't feel like I've really seen anything, but, you know, like the one we just continued today, like it's a difficult property because it was platted five million years ago and all of those things where there might be an instance where we have to change some things or make some conditional, um, things. So that's why I just kind of want to understand better, like what do those things look like typically type of thing?
Well, to the point you made earlier, too, about not being real specific, it, I think maybe what might be helpful is if we find ourselves in a place where conditions seem to be appropriate, then what are the considerations we need to give towards that? Right? And so it's more of a process discussion more than it is a specific look for these kinds of conditions. You know what I mean?
Yeah, no, that makes sense to me.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because I think where I could see connecting this topic to another comment you made previously is to think outside the box. As soon as we think outside the box, there's probably going to be a condition attached to it. Right?
And are there still plans for us to review some of the land use codes, code stuff we had talked about the last time? Based on direction from the board of trustees?
Um, I, I still think that there's some topics that warrant additional considerations and work sessions. Um, we, we gave a couple of ideas. I think there are more out there and there's always a, you know, we always look back at, you know, codes and processes and, and reiterate on those, what, what's working, what's not working and look for room to improve. That's a continual process. Um, so we have had some suggestions for different topics that might be looked at. Planning commission, it's up to you to assign the priority for when we bring those topics back. Um, be cognizant of the fact that staff, if we're hearing, hey, this topic is coming up in multiple areas and from multiple people, we're probably going to put some more emphasis on, this is one that we probably really need to talk about soon. Um, I would put a little more emphasis on some of the future RV possibilities for recreational vehicle parks. I think that one's got a little bit more weight behind it than maybe people think about or want to think about, and it's one that we need to have a real conversation around. Um, so that might be a future topic that staff comes back and says, this is something that we really need to put on the calendar.
Well, that and then like I had brought up about like the development standards about multimodal safety. Remember about like what are our standards in terms of, um, bike lanes and different things like that as things are developing out and connecting to the existing streets that we have?
Um, yeah, and, and absolutely. If, if staff is forgetting about one, remind me of them. Um, and I'll make myself another note here, too. Um, so we, those are all absolutely topics we can cover and, you know, depending on how much staff input there is on research and background and things, it's possible that we could have a work session with two or three topics if they're not drawn out long conversations. It could be, hey, this is what we recommend and this is the direction we think we should go. Do you like that? And we'll proceed. I mean, so not all of them require an hour plus conversation, but I think we could certainly, um, continue to communicate during this portion of the meeting on what topics need to be scheduled and which ones need to be sooner than later, um, to get those topics covered.
Is it worth assigning this a number two now? I could see this one going January and possibly into February. The, the planning commission one-on-one, that's a lot to get through in an hour.
Moving back. Breaking it up?
Yeah, if we end up breaking it up. And then is it, are the land use points, is that high enough on a priority list for staff that we should consider that into a march? And just make that the second priority? So you guys have some time to look ahead into that?
We, we could, um, I mean, I, I think they're all high priorities. It's a matter of which one do we have time to accomplish quickest and what's the highest need? I mean, they're all topics that I think are worthy of additional conversation, so I don't want to diminish any one or the other. Um, I don't know that, that there'd be enough, I think, I would consider a lot of them as kind of two-parters or, or multi, multi-part ones. I mean, you, this commission had some experience working through zoning map updates, some of you land use code, and I mean, we had multiple work sessions on the same topic to kind of, here's what we found, give us some direction. We researched it, we brought something else back. Do we like this? Do we not like it? Let's change that direction a little bit. Let's go back and reiterate it. So some of those topics are going to require, especially some of the land use ones, we'll present, here's what we found. They'll say, that makes sense. What about this? Oh, thanks. Didn't think about that. We need to go do some more research. We'll bring it back. I would consider a lot of those topics two-parters, um, at least. I mean, before we reach a point where we're taking it for action or recommendations to the board. Um, but a lot of it's going to start with, here's the, here's the problem we want to look at. Can you give us some direction for which, which angles we want to consider of general sense for, are we on the right track or not? Then we'll go and flesh this out and bring something back as kind of a draft document. Give us some feedback. We'll refine it and work through it that way. So these, I think for like February, if we had a kind of magnitude and direction type of conversation around some of those land use topics, it would help staff to not dive into extensive research and solution finding if we don't yet know, or haven't yet had a conversation around the topic. That was a long-winded answer, but I hope I kind of explained the way planners think about the subject matter and how it's it's number one and done.
That's, I mean, I think that's fair. Some of these are going to be two-parters. I just don't want to get to a point where we haven't discussed the next priority level after we're wrapping up the one-on-one. And
Yeah.
we have an opportunity to have a work session and we haven't done anything to fill that time. And we miss, you know, an opportunity to get something done.
Yeah.
All it would have taken is a little bit of conversation the month before.
Right?
So.
So what could, do you have some feedback on what the second topic you wanted to put on the work session would be?
I think the land use is probably pretty pertinent based on what we went through this past summer. It's not just the, the.
Procedures or applications or?
Reviewing land use code and potentially adding some of the, some of those and going back and looking at language of existing land use codes and
Yeah.
seeing what some of those need revised.
I agree with that, but I, I almost feel like we should do something about this industrial zone right here that's right next to the residential. And so I don't know if that comes first or if the land use piece comes first, but we're going to continue to have fights over this piece right here. Because it's heavy industrial, right?
Right.
Right next to residential, so.
We're going to struggle to change zoning though.
Yeah, I know that's a rezoning thing, but.
Right. None, none of the applicants have requested a rezoning, so it'd be, it'd be a little remiss to start the conversation without a request. But I think we can have a broader context around, are the buffers and distances between light industrial and industrial and residential? I mean, if we're looking at, um, land use code issues that are applicable town-wide, that is this the right way to address connections between these, then I think there can be a general conversation around some of that.
A hundred percent agree, but let me ask a clarifying question. So are you saying the only way that something gets rezoned is if an applicant makes a a request for that? Can we not proactively rezone on our own?
The planning commission and the board can initiate a rezone process. I, there's definitely some elements of timing involved that with an application currently pending district court review, um, that you wouldn't want to maybe start that conversation around a specific property, but
Yeah.
again, kind of thinking about town-wide land use issues and what works and what doesn't work is a conversation that we could start to have, knowing that it's still a work session. Um, no decisions are being made, but we're thinking through, what are some ways to address these topics that we're going to see in the future and start to look at how we can write a land use code to address some of those topics.
So that being part one of the conversation as a very broad overarching.
Yeah.
Of you looking at each of our zone dis- descriptions and then starting to narrow down and fill in.
Right, because we did just do a whole rezone.
It wasn't that long ago.
Like literally like last year or like early middle last year.
And can I clarify what you just, I'm trying to process what you just suggested and tell me if I'm wrong. But looking at the different pieces of zoning, the different zones, and then within each one, kind of as a series, discussing the language within the code that, okay. That code inside.
Part one of the, of that land use works, work session series or whatever it's going to be. And then once we kind of go through and everybody's comfortable with the description of each and the, you know, the buffers, the setbacks, all that kind of stuff. If we tighten those up first, we probably don't want to start throwing things into zones that are brand new and then retroactively go back and change the zones afterwards. It makes more sense to do it the other way.
So you, am I hearing the collective comments that maybe there's a need to do, I mean, the land use code was adopted a little over a year ago. Um, maybe it's time for that kind of look back, what's worked, what's not worked, but break it down in a little bit into, you know, maybe by zone district classification and what do we see that's working or not working? Um, and give staff some direction for research and bringing stuff back and then move on to, maybe it's a, if it's a kind of a evolving process across multiple work sessions, give some feedback on one, staff will bring back and present, here's kind of what we're seeing on that. Okay, give some direction and here's what we're going to start digging into on the next topic to kind of keep it rolling to make some progress on those.
Yeah, just be efficient because you know, once summer comes, the work sessions are going to be harder to do. Once the agenda starts filling up with three or four items, I'm less inclined to have an hour work session before, for site plan reviews.
Yep.
But there have been some stumbling blocks we've seen, like in public comment, not necessarily in front of us.
Yeah.
But in front of the board of trustees with provisions that are in the land use code, even for existing property owners. And so I think it would be good for us to go section by section and, you know, and then that, if people know we're having a work session, does that allow people to offer public comment at that time or no?
Work, yeah, work sessions are for, it's for the planning commission to work amongst yourselves and with staff. Um, we don't allow public comment or participation, but then if we have the work session first, it's still open to the public where anyone could attend and listen. You immediately would open a regular meeting with a public forum where they could comment during public.
That makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
But, but to that point, there at some, at some point, and this may be two years down the line, right? There probably ought to be some education efforts to educate people because there was so much misinformation out there in terms of what people perceive to be true or untrue about the land use code, about what an applicant was doing or not doing or whatever. So I think there needs to be something around education.
There's still a lot of that going on.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And I know there always will be, but I think anything we can do to help with that, right? Um, and then the last thing I would say, too, I like that direction that's being proposed. I think we also ought to have a layer at some point that overlays that, that basically says, okay, if we agree that for each zone, this is the land use for that. I think the other piece that we need to include at some point is looking at what we have now and looking at how we see the future growth. Do we have what we need, right? And so when I think about, um, what you're saying about, I'm going to call it the community commercial. Maybe that's not right. Which zone?
The, like the C-one zone for neighborhood commercial?
Well, now, do we have a zone for, like, what, what's the zone? Well, now do we have a zone for, like what, what's the zone for public? It's public. There it is. That's the zone for like the, the no development is going to be on those, in that zone, right?
No, I think the way the, the public, or not quite, the, the public. Right. I wouldn't say that it's no development. I think the, the P public was intended for town facilities and public uses. So we have, well, I guess it's not in the town yet, but the cemetery is, is close to town, but that will be annexed to the town someday. It would be zone public and you're not really going to develop, you know, commercial or houses or anything on a cemetery, but it might need restroom facilities or some other type of construction on it. Parks that are, we zone public might have.
Bike paths.
Right. Recreation centers, public works facilities might be on a piece of property zone public, but it doesn't necessarily mean public access. It just means, I mean, you have a school district zone public and it has development on it, not commercial or private. So I think being, using that zone category for, for intent and, and purpose for it's within this realm of providing an asset to the public versus it's open to the public versus closed.
Sure, 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 sure. Okay. So my thinking is, w- once we do this work is we make sure we've got the right connections between the different zones, right? Cause we may need more of a particular zone or less of a particular zone, right? And again, I know that that's pushing the rezoning agenda and that may be future, but I think we've got to always be ahead of it.
Right. No, I agree with you. I think it's a good topic of conversation. It might fall more under the planning commission's roles in adopting the comprehensive plan and future land uses. It's not always necessarily a, how do we change what we have in our city limits now? But if there's a, a lack of commercial land available in our current town limits, that might make a pretty high priority in a case to be made for the next time we're considering annexation. Let's make sure that we've identified the areas appropriate for commercial type of approach, so that any new applications coming in are contemplating that. Thanks for that feedback.
Comfortable with at least January, February for work sessions?
I, I think so. I mean, and.
Yeah.
And.
You'll be. Never mind.
No, I, I appreciate the, the humor and I, I also appreciate the direction. I think I have a good path in terms of topics that we'll start working on. And it's also my caveat that when I say we, some of these are multiple parts. If we bring back research and you say, no, that really wasn't what we meant, sorry, well, tell, give us a new direction and, and we'll, we'll get that right and we'll bring it back. Some of these topics are not as linear as maybe we'd want them to be. Um, and certainly some of the longer range planning type of topics like future land uses and do we have the right mix? Might take multiple conversations around what that right balance is. And then it might take a couple of conversations through an approval process to agree on that's the right direction. So as long as you can work with staff and know that we're going to keep bringing back information and facilitate those conversations. If we don't get a hundred percent right, we'll bring it back a second time. And I feel I do have direction for January, February.
Just direction is more, I think.
Well, and I think it's a good process for us to periodically review things because then we're not ten years down the road going, oh, we should update our land use code. And it's the big huge overhaul that it was this last time, right?
I feel like a lot happened since we did the land use code last time.
It's a big thing.
Oh, stop it. Can I get one of those street maps? Can you email me that file?
The, which one? The, the one on the left, the cadastro map? Let us double check. Well, that's what I was just going to say is let us double check and make sure that we have the, the file type that's current in a exportable type of digital format.
Twenty twenty.
It's going to, okay, well. That big? Okay. So I'm going to say we'll double check and make sure we've got that updated in that, you know, base set of assumptions. And we can forward it to you or we can plot it for you too. I think we could do that as long as our platter's working, but. Well, we'll follow up with that. Thank you for the direction. That, that's, that's helpful. And I feel like we've got a good path for the next couple of meetings.
Okay. Well, speaking of January, aside from the work session, obviously, what's the outlook? Anything going to be ready by January?
Yeah, for, thank you. I kind of moved right past other communications. So kind of looking into twenty twenty four, a quick reminder, the January meeting will be January eighth. I think that's the right date. The whole New Year's conflict. So a week later, um, we don't have any public hearing items for January. I think we, I believe we have a site plan application that should be, um, ready for the January meeting. Then looking ahead past that, um, we have another site plan application that would likely be probably March to April timeframe, if I'm being realistic with their current timing of, of review. Not aware of other public hearings at this time, but one of the things that we do try to do, I'll, I'll, it's a little early, but I'll throw it out there anyhow. As I'm thinking through twenty twenty four. We have planning commissioners that serve a four-year term. Some of them were appointed before that was changed and around a six-year term, but those terms are going to come to an end. April is when terms typically start and stop. Uh, we do have two planning commissioners that their appointments would end in April of twenty twenty four. And our current process does require any incumbent to reapply for that, uh, reappointment process along with any new applicants who might seek those positions as well. So as we're thinking through that, I do try and time a work session in like May or June to onboard any new planning commissioners that we have, um, as well as do refreshers on like legal context. Sometimes we'll invite our town attorney to go over the, the legalities of serving on the planning commission and do refreshers for those returning members. So I do also put that in my work session kind of calendar for, um, somewhere between, well, May or June to get those new members that might be coming on board. So that's something to think about too, in terms of long range, um, upcoming topics and things that might be coming down the pike on those other work sessions. I, yeah, I believe, I believe the two appointments were, were, yeah, Mr. Chairman McCaffrey's six-year, third, six-year term is coming to. And I think White House, Commissioner White House was also appointed to fill an unexpired term from a vacancy. And so that term is also coming up in April as well.
That's.
The, yeah, there were. In a, in a, yeah, yes. What the restructuring of the planning commission used to have trustees serving. And when trustees, um, saw that there was a lot of overlap between what they did on the planning commission and then they were seeing some of those same things on the board, there was a, a need and a desire to have the planning commission be completely separated from the board. Um, and so that change in, uh, governance did create three vacancies all at once, which we had to then fill. And some of them were staggered terms.
Question, if we have a work session planned and we don't have agenda item, would we extend that work session? On that same night?
I'm, that works fine from my perspective and there's not, you know, if we don't have a regular meeting, we have to post cancellation notices. But if we have a work session, um, before, then there's really be no reason to stop it at six thirty. Um, so that's certainly possible. The, the other question I would ask is if you had the option of coming to do a work session when you know you don't have a regular meeting with action items that you have to address, do you want staff to schedule that work session on that open night? Or would you prefer us move that work session to another light agenda on a regular meeting night?
Yeah, I think.
Okay.
Just have a work session, maybe not necessarily at five thirty. We can go back to regular time.
If there's no, uh, action items on the agenda for a given date to schedule the work session topic for six thirty? Okay.
Cancel, cancel the regular meeting, post it and then proceed with the.
And post the work session for the normal six thirty start time?
That's, yeah.
Okay.
It's worked out well in the past.
Yep. Have to do that.
Cool.
One last question. Would it be unusual to have, as we're doing some of the land use stuff that we're talking about? Would it be weird to have almost like a joint work session with the board of trustees? So that we're not doing a bunch of stuff that they don't support above, you know, like a, and not, not to say they wouldn't be, but just then there's kind of more of a agreed upon path of what we're looking at.
Um, it's, it's definitely possible. Um, one of the things we do have to, I'm kind of thinking through the mechanics of that. There's absolutely nothing against doing joint work sessions. We've done a couple of them on different topics over the years. Like one of the challenges that we need to work through on the staffing side is to do that when you have that many elected and appointed officials in the same room. We have to advertise it a little bit differently. So we need to have advanced planning that this is the date that we're going to do that to coordinate everything appropriately. And they would need to be willing and dates line up and all the, all the magical stars aligned thing to get everyone in the same room. But I think it's certainly possible if there's topics that we want to do joint sessions on.
I just was thinking the cohesiveness of that might at some point be appropriate. That's all.
Yeah. I think we can certainly do, do that, um, when those topics come up. And if it's not possible due to timing, schedules or something else, there might be another way to do it where we have, you know, planning commissioners represent that topic at a presentation to the board to kind of, you know, these are the things we've talked about and what made sense to us and receive that direction back to make recommendations. I mean, there's definitely different ways to navigate that subject matter, but the cohesion piece, I, I hear you.
Well, and the thought process comes from, I mean, I'm hoping that Commissioner McCaffrey and White House will be back. But if for some reason you weren't, and there were new planning commissioners and we have an upcoming election at that same time as well.
It only has to be four years this time? Hell, yeah, I'm coming.
Oh, you're in. Yeah. But you know what I mean? There's also an election coming up and we know at least one trustee will be different because Mayor Pro Tem McDonald is terminated. So there will be some changing of the guard no matter what. And so to make sure while we might all feel comfortable with that, that current board looks like as we start doing this work, it may look a little different and maybe there's newer fresh ideas that we would want to know about, basically.
Yes, definitely good things to be thinking about. So we'll, we'll keep those in mind. And if you have those ideas and topics and things that you'd want to do that, let's make sure we continue to talk about it and, and have those, have a path prepared so we can do it.
Officer elections in January, yeah, in January too. I should not campaign.
Somebody's got a nominee.
Just saying.
Thank you. I, I was thinking of applications, but you're right. One of our normal business items for the first meeting of the year is officer elections. So we'll.
Just, I just have to campaign to you. That's it. Okay. That I can do.
So you do that in January eighth meeting?
Yeah. Those, those staff reports look the same every year. Uh, so we've already got it written and it's ready to go. Not much changes. I don't have anything else. Thank you for the opportunity and thank you for the direction.
Okay. That's all for communications. Anybody have anything else? Oh, awesome. Adjourned.